And we are reconvened in open session. We will begin by considering action on closed session items. Mrs. James.
I move that the Board of Trustees approve the proposed resolution agreement with the U.S. Department of Education, Office for Civil Rights, Rights, Reference Number 06161343, and authorize the Superintendent to negotiate and execute the agreement.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. James and a second by Mr. Rice. Do we have discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Motion passes. Mr. Burdine.
Yes, Madam President. I move to propose termination of Troy Jones's probationary employment contract for good cause and to authorize the Superintendent or his designee to notify Mr. Jones of this action in accordance with applicable law and policy.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Burdine and a second by Mr. Rice. Do we have discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Motion passes. Okay, item 10, the Board Members' Reports, the Activity Report. Mr. Burdine.
Yes, Madam President. We have quite a few items here tonight. First is teacher convocations, auxiliary employee convocations, central administration convocations, City of Sugar Land celebration for Olympic athletes, Fort Bend Education Foundation golf scramble, high school open houses, Fort Bend ISD summer graduation, groundbreaking ceremonies for Elementary School 48 and Middle School 15, visits to Willow Ridge High School and Bridgegate Elementary School, Rep. Miller Education District Advisory Team Meeting, Gulf Coast Association of School Board Meeting, Ridge Point Production Tribute to 9/11, Fort Bend Chamber School Finance Luncheon, Vision and Planning Committee Meetings, Education Celebration in the Ismaili Jamadkana Center, Senate Ed Committee interim hearing on school choice, and what's it, Districts of Innovation, Elementary School Open Houses, Fort Bend Education Foundation Board Retreat, Fort Bend ISD Night at Skeeters, Middle School Open Houses, Team Building for Board and E-Team, Tech Ed Center Open House, Literacy Council Spelling Bee, Willow Ridge High School Visit, and a Fort Bend Chamber of Commerce Understanding Differences.
Thank you, Mr. Burdine. Moving on to special reports. Do we have special reports this evening? Mrs. James.
I have a special report. And I have a report because I, I and my team that are identified, we're the ones that are wearing the medals, and also the tiaras and the glasses. Well, okay, I'm part of my team. We represented, thank you, we represented Fort Bend ISD in the Literacy Council Spelling Bee. We. You might never, it might, it might end really quickly. Anyway, we were very proud, I'm gonna have to take these off. We were very proud to represent. No, you need to stay looking good, because we're stars. We're stars. We, the three of us took the bait, I guess, and represented the school district in the Literacy Council Spelling Bee. And our primary objective was not to embarrass the school district or cause people who live in our school district to be concerned about the education that their children would be receiving. So we made the appropriate disclaimers when we got up to spell. We actually, it turned out to be pretty fun, and we didn't embarrass ourselves. We were easily in the top 10 of the final groups. And I want to thank Beth and Deanna for participating with me. We had a good time. One thing that we also got to do is reiterate with Sugar Land Rotary Club and with the Literacy Council, our partnership in helping adults over in our Ridgemont feeder pattern learn to read. And we thanked them for their support and for their partnership with us, and the longstanding partnership we have with them, helping adults in our community with their literacy. So it was a fun time, and our team agreed, and I think ladies you agree, that next year, instead of being the Spelling Bee's, that was our, that was our team name, next year it's gonna be Men Who Spell.
Thank you, Mrs. James. Thank you guys for participating in that. That's great. Okay, Mr. Rice.
Madam President, I would like to beg your indulgence for a brief moment of personal privilege to thank Dr. Dupree and the administration and all of the teachers and staff. It's been almost a month since school started, and school started this year with no issues, without a hitch. I have some experience with what it takes to open a school, but 74,000 children arrived and were taught and fed and sent home safely, and I don't think we should take it for granted. And I think they deserve a round of applause from us.
Thank you, Mr. Rice, for doing that.
Can I acknowledge that and just say, we appreciate your affirmation, Mr. Rice, and I in turn want to acknowledge the fact it's really the principals that, you know, they're over 50% of that equation. We're here to support them. But for them, the teach, and the teachers that make it all happen at the school level for those children, that's, that's where the work is done. So we appreciate the Board's support in our, in that endeavor.
Absolutely. Thank you, Dr. Dupree. And last, I have a special report to share. I am very excited to announce that the Board of Trustees is embarking on a listening tour beginning next month at Marshall High School. For our board workshop next month on October 10th, we will begin at 5:00 P.M. And we will have about an hour's worth of engagement with the community directly. Board members will be there and will be participating in roundtables with the executive team, and we will be taking questions from our community members. And so I just wanted to announce that publicly. We will be having some, some information that goes out, some advertising that will be done in the newspapers. It's up on our website. We've already done some email blasts, and we've also sent invitations to our local elected officials to let them know, because we would like to engage more than just the parents and the staff that are part of Fort Bend ISD, but we would like to engage our, our extended community members to come out and participate in this. Just to give everyone a heads up on the schedule, we'll be spending about 15 minutes with opening remarks, probably not that long, but from officers and possibly other board members. We will then engage of about, with, in about 30 minutes of roundtable discussion where trustees will be situated around the room with executive team members to answer written questions. There will be a table provided for our community members to go and write their questions, and then those will be distributed among the roundtables for us to answer and engage with them. And then we will close with 15 minutes where we will also introduce a feeder pattern fact sheet where we'll talk about some of the board initiatives and how they have impacted the schools and that particular feeder pattern. We'll also send out, if we have a particular question or topic that's brought up more than once, we will send out a written response following that meeting, just to make sure that it hits community members and parents that couldn't be there that evening. There will be light snacks provided, and our goal is, is also to include some of the students in the feeder pattern in various ways, perhaps the choir, students to do the pledge. It's something a little bit different than we normally do for a workshop, but we really wanted to get the students out and get them involved as well. So I'm very excited about this. I, I think the rest of the Board is very excited about this. This will be one in a series of four that we will do this year. The next ones will be November 7th at Bush High School, February 6th at Hightower High School, and March 6th at Travis High School. So I look forward to seeing the community out there. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to item 11, our consent agenda. Does anyone have anything to remove from the consent agenda?
Yes, Madam President.
Mr. Rice.
C4 and 5, E and F.
E and F?
Yes.
Okay.
C1.
C1. And Mrs. James.
A and B. And that's, and that's all.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Madam President, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented, with the exception of A, B, C1, C4, C5, E, and F.
Second.
And, Mr. Rice, we're removing D3 as well. I think the administration has, has removed.
Okay, C3.
D3.
D3. We have a motion by Mr. Rice and a second by Mr. George. Do we have discussion?
Yes, Madam President. I have a question.
Okay, Mrs. James.
I have a question on item D2.
Okay.
It's the post-closing agreement for land in this purchased in Siena Plantation having to do with the roads. And there's an agreement that, as I was understanding, it was about $105,000 for those, for those road developments. And I'm wondering, is that a correct understanding? And also, is this amount of money in the project budget?
Madam President, real members of the Board, yes ma'am, that, that money is in the land purchase, and the 105 is for the turning lanes into the school. And so what we looked at was, in order for us to do this work after the fact, would have cost us more money than to allow the contractor in Siena Plantation that's doing the road now to go ahead and put that in as they were, they were doing their work. It was a lot more inexpensive. We had the architect and engineer look at all of the numbers, and they were in agreement that this was a better way to go.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Rice.
Can I ask, just to clarify, so you're saying that the money is coming out of the land budget, out of the 2014 land budget? Or it's part of the project budget that we approved when we approved the construction contractor and designated authority to negotiate the contract with Dr. Dupree and all of those pieces, all of that? Do you understand what I'm asking?
I can, in addressing the, the budget, I honestly don't remember whether or not we were planning on having it for the project or the land. We can have it as part of the land budget itself, and so we do have quite a bit of slack in, in the overall land budget that was allotted. And I think 18 million was that original number for all sites. And so this is, if this is a modification to the site itself, we could certainly put that on to, to the land budget.
Okay, so normally when we do, when we were approving these projects, right, we approve, I'm talking about this particular project, so this is Elementary School 48, Middle School 15. That's the project we approved, and when we approve that, we approve a project budget. And so you're saying that this money, this $105,000 is not in that project budget, but you would use money that's in the 2014 bond program, other monies, or possibly out of the land, the money that's set aside for land or land development or land purchasing, excuse me?
Yes, we, we have that option, but we'll have to look at that. I'll have to look at that budget and get back to you.
Okay, so you don't know, so we don't know where the monies come from, and it's not going to come from, and it's not in the current budget.
Ms. James, I'll have to look at that and get back to you.
Okay, thank you.
So what is the, I'm gonna have a follow-up question. So the amendment to the post-closing agreement for land purchased, you're making the recommendation that we amend the budget, but you're not making a recommendation of where that money comes from?
I think they're recommending.
Is that accurate?
Look back at that.
No, I think they're recommending that they approve, well, I don't, I shouldn't speak for the administration. They're recommending that there's an amendment to the contract that we have.
I understand.
Yes, ma'am. It's my understanding that we would amend the land purchase contract, so this is, this would come, in my opinion, from the land budget.
Okay. Do we have additional questions? Okay, hearing none. Okay, Mr. Rosenthal.
We are paying the Toyota Center 40,000 a day for the, you know, the, the rent agreement, and so Smart Financial is 25,000 a day, and there were associated fees, you know, two that go with that. So a total budget was close to twice as much as they're charging for the Smart Financial. Right. Substantially less.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. Okay, hearing no further discussion, please vote. Motion passes. Now for consideration, item 11A.
Madam President, we have an alternate version of the district goals and objectives, some slight language changes, and I'd like to move to approve this alternate version.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. James and a second by Mr. Rice. Do we have discussion?
Yes, Madam President.
Mrs. James.
So I think as Dr. Dupree mentioned, or maybe he didn't, but I sent in some, a couple, little bit of language changes on these goals and objectives to make them a little more direct, so that it was clear, we weren't thinking about developing the systems, we were actually going to develop the systems or the plans or the products that we're going to use for these various goals. So that's what that, that's what this version is about. I also wanted, though, to ask, because I'm, I was struggling a little bit with how these goals and objectives, if we approve them, align with the Superintendent's evaluation. Because the, the next item on our agenda is a Superintendent's Evaluation Instrument, and I was having trouble getting from one document to the next and understanding the alignment. So could someone help explain that to me, or explain what you're thinking, how they align?
I can address that. So essentially, for the last several months, we've shared with the Board the management's strategic plan that out, that supports the goals and objectives outlined in the document we presented for approval this evening. Under each of those are a number of strategies and measurement evaluation metrics that would be used. And so those things are very broad, of course, because they address the broader needs of the whole district. But the Board has also clearly identified five priorities related to curriculum, leadership development, program evaluation, performance management, and student assessment. And so the, the evaluation instrument for the Superintendent, based on the Board's direction, is focused on the Board's top five priorities only, but all the items included in the evaluation instrument are drawn from the strategic plan that supports the goals and objectives, so that I am being evaluated on the Board's top five priorities. Even though, as we've talked about, there are other things we do that are important to be part of the plan, but the evaluation would only be the things that relate to those priorities. So the connection from the things you're seeing here today, from the goals and objectives to the evaluation instrument, goes through the management-developed strategic plan.
Okay, and I, I thank you for that, thank you for that explanation. My, my, I like the way the Superintendent Evaluation Instrument is written, because the goals are written as smart goals, and they're focused on the Board's priorities that we identified or discussed with you close to a year ago. So I think that that part is good. And I'm fine with going ahead with these goals and objectives as they're presented, realizing that the priorities that are identified in the Superintendent Evaluation Instrument are a subset of, kind of, of these goals and objectives, and are the real priorities of the Board. And I want to be clear that we communicate that well, because to the casual observer who might say we're approving these goals and objectives, they all would, they might think that they all have equal value, when I think it's really the intention of the Board, that we have priorities among these. And so I just want to be sure that we're, I mean, maybe my other trustees can agree or disagree, but I would, because I guess I would like to hear if that's, if we, if that's still what we're thinking, and if we are, would encourage the staff to communicate that in a way, so that we have clear direction, I guess, for our school district. That's my number one goal, is making sure we have clear direction. And I'm anxious that this doesn't, these goals and objectives don't quite capture what our real direction is.
Thank you, Mrs. James. Do we have comments from the other trustees?
Can I make another comment then?
You can.
All right, I'd like to make one other comment, and that is, is that I'd like to, the next time we have goals and objectives come to us, I would like them to be smart goals. I would like them to be measurable, so that we clearly, the organization as a whole has a clear understanding of what we're trying to do and in what timeframe. And I know we've got a planning process going on right now that's helped trying to get us to look at, you know, the next version of this, essentially, Fort Bend ISD 2.0. And, and I think we've, I just want to be, have an awareness that maybe next time when we do this, we, we try to get some measurability in there, and we get some clear, some landmarks, so we can measure our success or our, or our steps towards success as we put our policies into place.
Thank you, Mrs. James. I, I was just gonna comment that, that I agree with you, that I think, I, I like how the Superintendent, Superintendent's Evaluation is written, and I think the priorities are clearly listed there. And I think through the way that we are planning currently, and through the Vision and Planning Committee, and how we're going about this process now, that that is where we, what we are driving to, that, that I think this is all gonna look very different next time around, so.
And I just want to make sure that our, that all the staff, people that are here and the people that aren't here, know that what our five priorities are. Now, Dr. Dupree, as you mentioned them, and that, because to me, that, that's, it's important for them to recognize, are they working towards a priority item, or is this a, is this something else? And I think it makes a difference in how we work our, you know, how the staff engages in the productivity. Even as we were talking tonight earlier about creating the district improvement plan, is it aligned with the priorities that the Board has set in place, or has asked the Superintendent to achieve, or is it not? And so I just want to be clear that it's, that we're, we're making that communication effort.
Thank you, Mrs. James. If there's no further discussion, please vote. Motion passes. All right, item 11B. May I have a motion?
Move to approve item 11B as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. James and a second by Mr. Rice. Do we have discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Motion passes. Item 11C1, may I have a motion, please?
Madam President, I move to approve item C1 as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Rice and a second by Mr. George. Do we have discussion?
Yes, Madam President. Last week, we talked about Heritage Rose Elementary School and the playground and the hard surface, the playground hard surface canopy, and I wanted to make clear that this came up in a conversation when we were talking about how we're spending our money in the district. And I wanted to make it clear that I, I am supportive, supportive of this. I'm extremely supportive of playtime. I think it's very important that our kids get out and play, and I think it's crucial to their, their learning environment, and I just wanted to make that clear, that it had nothing to do with Heritage Rose Elementary School, or this particular item is purely a conversation about how we're spending our money and what we're spending it on. So I just wanted to make that clear.
Thank you, Mr. Burdine. Mr. Rice?
I agree with Mr. Burdine, and I would, I would like to ask the Board President if we can have some playtime for the trustees.
Absolutely, Mr. Rice. I will write that into the next agenda. Thank you, Mr. Rice. Mrs. James, or, Mrs. James.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mrs. Tosan. I, I would like to reiterate what Mr. Burdine said, because my comments last time, and my position on this item is not at all reflecting on the Heritage Rose Elementary School, or playtime, or playgrounds, or any of that. I, and, I am not clear still on the administration's explanation for the alternatives that were explored, and why this project became the priority. And I feel that as the, as a person who's in a role of oversight for a very large bond project and for finances of our large district, that I'm, I want to be sure that every time we consider spending money, we're considering spending it in a thoughtful, in a thoughtful way. And there's a reason we have a Board policy that says, if we're gonna spend over $50,000 on any one thing, that it's gonna come before the Board. And part of that is to make sure that we are good stewards of our taxpayers' money. So we had discussion last week about this item in the frame of, there's a very small amount of contingency remaining in the bond program as it currently exists. There's some conjecture in the, in 2014 bond program as it exists. The funding for this project is out of the 2007 Bond Contingency Fund, as it's identified here. But nevertheless, I think the spirit of our previous resolution and the spirit of how we want to spend bond contingency money is on high-needs facilities items that are in the spirit of a bond, long-term capital investment program. So I'm, at this point, not really in favor of this playground purchase, and that's only solely because of the possibility that there might be another project that's a higher priority. And I'm just gonna leave it at that.
Thank you, Mrs. James. So I would just like to say, at the risk of being biased here, because I have a student at Heritage Rose, who will probably not get the benefit of this before she leaves and goes on to Bain's, but it was my understanding that the reason this was brought forth was because we doubled enrollment at Heritage Rose last year, and the kids are basically not, they don't have anything to play on. They don't have anything to, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, and if I could also provide additional information that.
Thank you.
The 2007 bond had four new schools, one of which was Heritage Rose, the other were Schiff, Once Again, and Madden Elementary. Madden was delayed a little longer, but it was part of the 2007 bond. And of those, there's only was part of the 2007 bond. And of those, there's only two schools, which is Once Again and Heritage Rose, that only have one playground. The others have two playgrounds. And of, of the two, Heritage Rose has 1,000 students, Once Again has approximately 770 students, which is below the 850. And so with, you know, for this reason, we look to, you know, would like to go ahead and recommend that we put in the second playground at Heritage Rose to go ahead and serve those 1,000 students.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Perez. So I, I, I agree with you, Mrs. James, because I think we do have to be mindful of how we're spending these contingency funds. I think these are good questions to ask. I think that we need to be good stewards of, of our bond money especially. But I would say that I am in favor of it mostly because we have said in this boardroom many times that kids being able to play is very important to the learning experience. And, and with double the enrollment at the school in a very short period of time, there are at least half the kids that are out at, at recess time who are not able to engage in playtime. So, so that's all I would have to say there. Okay. Hearing no further discussion, please vote. Motion passes. Okay. Item 11C4.
Madam President, I move to approve Consent Agenda, item 11C4 as presented.
We have a motion by Mr. Rice and a second by Mr. George. Do we have discussion?
Yes, Madam President. My, it appears to me, Mr. Perez, in looking at the memo that we got on the square footage, that we're exceeding the program square footage by about 6,900 square feet. If I multiply that times $240 a square foot, we're over $1.6 million over budget. Can you provide information that would disabuse me of the perception that we're approving a project that's already over budget at schematic design?
Mr. Rice, I would need to look closely at that, but I, I believe that that may include the additional six classrooms in there. I, I need to look for sure and get back to you on that.
It does not.
It does not, okay. Then, in that case, we would need to go ahead and get with the STAN Tech and make sure that we get them back to the program budget.
So how, how will you do that? If we approve it tonight, how are we going to, we had a very nice presentation from Ms. Hendrickson last Monday, but it's based on a program that's over the square footage called for in our original program. And it looks like we've cut back 4,500 square feet on the restrooms. And I'm just wondering, because once we approve it tonight, we're not gonna see it again. If that's my understanding, we approve it at SD, and the next time we would hear about this is after it is bid and you're presenting it to the board for approval, for the contract to be approved.
Yes, sir. Could I ask Jennifer to-
Ms. Hendrickson, will you, do you mind coming to the microphone to speak to that? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. On the spreadsheet that was sent out, if you look at the net square feet, the actual program square footage, what was programmed is 131, 415. And where we are right now is 132, 344. So we're slightly over, about 929 square feet on the program space. Where the overage is right now is in the circulation space. So we're working aggressively to tighten our circulation space in order to close that gap. I'm confident that we'll be able to get there without sacrificing program.
Yeah. What is the construction cost per square foot? What is our budget?
I would have to look. I'm sorry, I don't have it on me right now. If you look in our folder, you have the budget.
I don't have it in front of me, no.
If you don't have it, I can see if I have it.
Well, I'm guessing it's around $240 a square foot. Does that sound accurate?
Be close.
So have we done a cost estimate?
We have turned our schematic design drawings over to our cost estimator. We're expecting those numbers back within the next week.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Ms. Hendrickson. Mr. Perez, could we get a, an update from you, a reminder on what our construction budget is for this project and what our plans are? If, when we finally goes out to bid, it's over budget, how we would either do value engineering or how we would get it in budget?
Yes, sir. Sure can.
You, you can get that for us?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you. No further questions.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Thank you, Ms. Hendrickson. Mrs. James?
Thank you. Thank you for those questions, Mr. Rice, because I had some of the same ones. So I appreciate you analyzing that. And I see these totals here for the square footage, so I have the same, same question. I have another question. It's maybe a little more curriculum instruction related. And that is around, I was trying to ask last week around the technology, the technology area. It shows in the information technology on the, on the spreadsheet that we have, that we have capacity for 24 students in our, in the information technology program. Could someone explain what the kind of the reasoning is behind that number, if they feel that's an adequate number, if they feel what, and I, I brought this up last week because I feel like this is an area of interest for students, employability for students who graduate with certification in these areas, and just a high-need area in our community. And I'm, I'm, I'm wondering about it.
Yes, ma'am. We actually do have the capacity if more student participation in those areas grow to access them in other areas. So currently, the way that it's set up is the students have at work, have access to the network, and it's also attached to the lab. So if they're doing any, any of the computer maintenance, they have room to spread out and to actually take apart computers and put them back together. So if more student interest grows, we do have additional classrooms where we can convert that to computer labs if necessary, or they would have access to the adjoining areas where they're welcome to go into maybe the arts and audio video, computer lab and things like that, so that they would have definitely more room.
Okay. That sounds like good news. Now, oh, sorry. That sounds like good news. Does that, is, so is this space that has a student capacity of 24 students in information technology, does it have special, special technology in it except for a computer lab? Is there something else there? Do, do you know about it?
Yes, ma'am. The lab is adjoined to the actual working area where the students are able to go and look at that infrastructure, so they would have access to that.
So they have some understanding about hardware, the hardware and how it, okay, and how it all interacts. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. James. Hearing no addition, oh, Mr. Rice.
I just have another question, Mr. Perez. So for the CTE Center, is our budget, our budget's fully developed for construction, for FFNE, for bringing in technology, some construction contingency? Are we lacking in this budget in any way?
No, sir. The budget is fully developed.
Okay. And when do you anticipate returning to the board with a recommendation for a general contractor?
We're, Jennifer, in April.
In April?
April.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. All right. Hearing no additional discussion, please vote. Motion passes. Right. Item 11C5, may I have a motion?
Madam President, I move to approve item 11C5 as presented.
We have a motion by Mr. Rice and a second by, by Mr. George. Do we have discussion?
Yes, Madam President. Mr. Perez, my, my question is this, on because our program reserves have been depleted, what is the cost per square foot that we included in the budget for construction for our elementary schools?
Could you repeat that or?
So when we planned the budget for the 2014 bond, and we knew we were gonna build elementary schools, what is the construction cost that we included in the bond program? Not the program cost, but the construction cost?
$218 a square foot.
Okay. And what was the size of the elementary schools? In other words, how does Fort Bend ISD determine what size elementary school is built? Because it seems we've had several elementary schools that have varied greatly in cost, and I'm assuming that most of our elementary schools, unless it's a special condition, would follow, that we have a philosophy at Fort Bend ISD that says we're gonna build elementary schools for 850 kids or something like that. And, and so that tells us about how many square feet it would be, but it, it seems like it's varied a lot between the various architects that have delivered plans to us to approve, and every project's gone over budget. So my question, it's $218 cost per square foot for construction. How do we determine the size of an elementary school? And then how do we manage our architects and engineers who are all following our design guidelines and technical standards and our educational specifications to ensure that the schools, which will be different in appearance and layout, still fall within the guidelines that we established when we set the budget? So what, what size elementary schools are we typically building in Fort Bend ISD? Sullivan Elementary notwithstanding?
Yes, sir. And it was determined in the development of the EdSpecs for the elementaries in the 21st century that we would go in and build for 850 students with 1,000 core. Now, Sullivan is different. Sullivan is, is 1,200 students, but the remainder, 850 with 1,000 core. And of the elementaries that were designed at this point, there was a variation of about 3,000 square foot from the, the one with the least to the one with the most. And they varied from 119,000 square foot to about a, almost 123,000 square foot. One of the things that we learned as we've gone through this is that we relied on design surets and allowing staff to have a lot, a lot of input. And if you've ever been in one of those, which I'm sure you have, people get excited and, you know, they, they look at these, you know, different designs. From, from that, what we would do moving forward would be to definitely go ahead and say, well, you know, what is this gonna do? Because depending on, on your design, and, and I'll just, you know, put a school out there, 49, which has wings that, that head out in different directions, is, is, you know, very spread out, that design tends to get you circulation space that you can't really minimize because of angles. And so you end up with, with more circulation space. So that's part of what we've learned through this process. And as we move forward, we would make sure that we would keep the architects tight and, you know, not to tell them how to design it, but definitely to make sure they stay within the square footage that, you know, Fort Bend is wanting to design their schools for.
How did we, what were their fees based on? Were their fees based on a percentage of construction?
Yes, sir.
So was that, so we rewarded architects who exceeded the square footage because actually the construction costs went up and their fee went up?
That is correct.
So that should be a lesson learned for the next bond program.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Do we have additional discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Motion passes. Now for consideration, item 11E, may I have a motion?
I move for approval of item 11E as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. James and a second by Mr. Rice. Do we have discussion?
Yes. Dr. Dupree, my question is, if we approve this tonight, I was confused. I know we've talked about this during the workshop, moving forward with the issuing of the commercial paper program. But does this give, are you gonna come back to us each time, or are we giving you carte blanche to sell commercial paper for the next 12 months or the next whatever, whatever period of time? Or what is that?
I'm gonna see if you've got the details on that one.
Yes, sir. Mr. Rice, this gives us the authority to issue commercial paper up to $100 million.
For what period of time?
I don't think it is limited by time. I do think it'll certainly be within a 12-month timeframe, but it is to only fund the, the, the bond projects as they come up.
Okay. But why would we want to do, why would we want to give you an unlimited amount of time for 100 million? And if we did sell 100 million, what would that increase the percentage of our short-term paper to? So I thought I heard Mr. Viasenior say 25% was kind of the threshold. We're about 9% now, I think.
Right. We're at 9% now with just around 80-something million. So we, we would still be well below 20% with, with 100 million if, if that's what we would do. But again, once we had the 100, once we get between 100, excuse me, 80 million to 100 million, then we're gonna fix it out and issue and, and put it into the, either fixed rate or variable rate at that time. And so it'll be kind of a, a rolling amount. We will not always maintain that much in commercial paper. So as we get, again, as we get close to 100 million dollars, then we'll come to the board with a, with a new resolution to issue debt, to go to the market for new funds, and that would totally pay off the commercial paper.
For long-term debt that would pay down on the short term?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, I'm just wondering if we should put a, a timeframe in here. I, I think you have a good committee who's assisting in the evaluation of when it's time to buy commercial paper. But I'm, I'm just uncomfortable giving the administration carte blanche in, at least when it comes to a timeframe. If we said this is going to be in effect for six months or 12 months, I think I would be more comfortable with that.
Thank you, Mr. Rice.
Any, any comments?
Comments from Mrs. James?
I, I, I didn't think of that, Mr. Rice, but I think it's a good point. Because I think there's two things you brought up. One is the timeframe of how long we grant the authority. And we've kind of tried to do that each time we've given authority. We've tried to put an endpoint on it, so we have a milestone to check. And then the second thing is, that you said, is how will we know how it's going? And I think that would, we would need some assurance from administration for updates, either in the form of a memo or on the, you know, the update type of vehicle where we would get, or maybe as part of our financial report, could be done then too, quarterly update or something like that.
That's what I was gonna say. There's a net, there's a built-in checkpoint every, we do monthly financials, and this would be part of the monthly financial report.
I mean, we could, we could have a recurring item in the summer when we have some of our other recurring finance items where we, you could, you could look at that and just reauthorize that. I mean, I would be, I wouldn't want it to be earlier than six months. We may need those full six months. But I think if you have a recurring, recurring item every 12 months in the summertime, that would probably work. But, but like Dr. Dupree said, I mean, it is something that we will be reporting on in the, in the, in the monthly financials where you can see those. And whenever we do give the debt updates and also what we show the bond oversight committee, whenever we're showing them the cost of debt, which we do every time we meet with them, those reports would also be available.
Well, I'm uncomfortable with that, Mr. Bassett, because it's, to me, it's very important that this board understand the finances of- that this board understand the finances of this district. And every time I venture out into the public, I am assailed by people who claim that we are mismanaging funds, who say we have three administrators for every teacher, which is patently false. And who say that we, our finances are not in good shape because of the bond programs that we have had. And if you give us that information in a report, it will be completely lost on us. This board changes composition from time to time. And I think it is important for this board to make an intentional decision to move forward with commercial paper at least once a year. And so if we approve this tonight with a six-to-12-month time limit, then I am comfortable with that. I know that you're going to try to do the right thing, but it's important for the board to understand this. And we only talk about it once, once a year, once, maybe twice a year. And we've slept in the meantime. It's very difficult for a board member to retain that kind of knowledge in their mind because there's so much to learn about what goes into running a school district. So, Madam President, I would like to amend this motion to, to limit this, or to impose a term of 12 months from today, allowing the superintendent and this committee to make those decisions for a period of 12 months. And at the end of that time, they would come back and bring Mr. Viasenior and Mr. Frelz back to talk to us again about, refresh our memory and all of that. And we can review and discuss it and approve it at that time.
We have a motion by Mr. Rice and a second by Mr. George to amend the original motion. Do we have discussion?
I'd like to suggest, Steve, you may need to guide me on this. We may need to pull this for additional work by Jonathan Frelz for the legal documentation if you want a timeline in it. There may be no impact, but there could be impact on the legal documents. So I would be hesitant to make that nature of a change without legal counsel.
Yeah. Just so you know, I mean, Mr. Frelz was going to be here this evening, but he's at the hospital. His father's ill. And so I, I told him, you know, to go ahead and do what was important. What I would see us doing though would be giving the, the board a briefing and bringing back the commercial paper on a regular basis in the August timeframe. That would be the best timeframe because that's when we're discussing and setting the debt service rate. And so that's the best timeframe for it. So that'd be 11 months from now. But as far as amending the documents, yeah, I would have to, maybe I can get out and maybe give him a call.
So does administration want to pull the item?
I'm not comfortable seeking approval on something with, with a change of that nature without consulting the attorney.
We were hoping to be able to issue paper in, in October. And so this, I don't know if we can wait until the next October meeting. I don't know if we're, if we're going to have time or if you're going to want, willing to add an action item to the, the meeting on the 26th. But that, that could put us into a bind.
Okay. Well, I'm going to make a suggestion that we pull it this evening pending legal counsel. And we, and we will entertain putting it on as an action item for our meeting next week. Okay?
So Madam Board President, it would be appropriate for you to entertain a motion to table the items since you've already had a motion and second on the original motion?
Okay. Can I get a motion to table, please?
So moved.
We have a motion by Mr. Rice to table item 11E and a second by Mrs. James. Do we have discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Motion passes. Okay. Thank you. Moving on to item 11F. May I have a motion?
Madam President, I move to approve consent item 11F as presented.
We have a motion by Mr. Rice and a second by Mr. George. Do we have discussion?
I just have a question on this, Mr. Basset. This is, if the previous motion E had been approved, then F gives you authority to move forward with this? Is that what I'm saying? Or is this is a separate thing to pay down $7 million?
This is a completely separate item and is not contingent on item E at all.
And I'm not opposed to paying down debt, but why did you choose to pay down $7 million on this debt?
We need, we need this motion, we need this item to be able to substantiate the 30 penny tax rate from a truth and taxation perspective.
Very well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Do we have additional discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Motion passes. Onto action items. Item 12A is approval of 2007 and 2014 bond program, construction project and project budget regarding the electrical service at Willeridge High School and McCullough Middle School and a blanket easement. May I have a motion?
Madam President, I move to approve action item 12A as presented.
We have a motion by Mr. Rice and a second by Mr. George. Do we have discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Motion passes. Item 12B. May I have a motion?
Madam President, I move to approve item 12B as presented.
We have a motion by Mr. Rice and a second by Mr. George. Do we have discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Motion passes. Item 12C, Mrs. James.
I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of 1.34, which is effectively a 7.45% increase in the total tax rate.
We have a motion by Mrs. James and a second by Mr. George. Do we have discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Motion passes. Finally, item 12D, consideration of approval of class size waivers for the 16, 17 school year. May I have a motion?
I move to approve the item as presented.
We have a motion by Mrs. James and a second by Mr. Rosenthal. Do we have discussion?
Yes.
Mrs. James.
So thank you very much for all the work into this explanation. And it looks like, as you, as you warned us, there's a significant number in the increase in the request for waivers. So my question is, and I understand we need to, we need to do this because our staffing ratio was very low last year and we're trying to get it more on par with the 22 to 1. Do we continue to look for well-qualified teachers as we go through the school year? Even if we, even if we at this point have waivers in these classrooms and some of these classes are over our 22 numbers, what do we, what happens with our staffing?
We, Ms. James, we will continue to look for teachers throughout the year and try and staff those positions.
Okay. So if they, if you feel that there's a need, then you, you're, and I guess you're always on the alert for well-qualified teachers, but I see Mr. Spears nodding, smiling. Yes. Okay. So because I, I guess some, you, you talked a little bit about this, but the situations and the circumstances can be very particular to that school, right? I mean, and to where the waivers are, are being utilized. And the situations may change over time. And I guess I'm just sensitive to the burdens of teachers when they have a large class with maybe a large number of needs in it. And I'm concerned that we don't wear out or burn out our teachers when we have, you know, when they've chosen a profession, when they want so desperately to care for every child that comes into their classroom. But they sometimes struggle because they're overwhelmed with the needs of all those children.
Yes, ma'am. We do work closely with our principals and ask our principals to be very sensitive to our teachers as they work hard to meet the needs of all of their students. So it is an ongoing concern and something that we continue to monitor throughout the year.
Okay. Well, thank you, Dr. Faust. One other question I would have is how do we evaluate? Maybe you can give some specifics. How do we, how are, how are you or your staff assistants evaluating the implementation of these waivers? I mean, are you, what, what types of things do we look for? What would be warning signs that it's, things aren't going well? Or, yeah, I guess that would be my question.
Yeah. So again, we, we would, the principal would most likely receive feedback from teachers if there were concerns, where teachers would reach out for support. And then the principal would in turn reach out to the assistant superintendent, express the need and, and we would work on it from there. So that might show in discipline issues in the classroom as an example.
Okay. And then does that, would that come back to us as a request for another FTE? Or how does that, in the middle of the year? Or is it, or do we have some in reserve? Or do we, how do we handle that?
We, we would work with Human Resources Department and, and the Finance, Business and Finance Department and request those new positions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. James. Hearing no further discussion, please vote. Motion passes. Item 13, review future board meeting agenda items. Dr. Dupree?
Yes, ma'am. We've got a variety of things coming up in October, November, including a, a couple of public hearings. In October, we'll do a hearing on the TAEZ plans that we discussed with you this evening for the two IR campuses. We're also have an accountability update, part two, in October, as well as strategic planning update continued. For action items, we'll have the TAEZ plans as we discuss. We're going to ask you to look at policy EG local. Several of you have met with us to give us your feedback. And we'd like to hear from anyone who's interested in, in looking at that as well. But that'll be back on the agenda in October as long as policy BQ local as we discuss this evening. There's a few other small action items that need to be labor coming in November. Then a public hearing, our annual first report. That's the Financial Integrity Rating System of Texas. And then information items, we're going to do a bond program update, facilities update on life cycle and preventative maintenance planning, as well as a strategic planning update. And then, as we heard earlier this evening, district and campus improvement plan, performance objectives, and an update for the superintendent evaluation instrument. Of course, there's a host of purchases also that'll be added to the agenda.
Thank you, Dr. Dupree. Do we have any questions by the trustees on this? All right. Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. We are adjourned.